We do it like this other reason. What year is today?
October nineteenth.
All right, we're going to call this meeting ordered July nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Okay, on to the agenda. New business, Highway ninety-one project traffic.
So you know, we've been having a problem with the new signs and the new traffic, and I think everybody in this room has been involved in it. Um, I was talking to the sheriff a little while ago, and he, he's probably got a little bit of extra news if you'll tell him. But, um, they did put new signs down there at Avenue, and they did put new signs down there at Kimball and Johnny Freeman, am I correct, Sheriff? And, um, tell them how, tell them about the, uh, what they told you about trying to shut it down at, um, Mural City? What the DOT say?
We, we discussed that Monday night, you know, but then state regulations, you know, they'd have to warn them so far ahead of that. But, and we looked at it Monday night out there, you know, on the coming south, you know, up there at Notchway Church, it, it was marked pretty good. But what was so confusing to people? When you cross Spring Free Bridge going north, the flashing sign there said, you know, ninety-one north closed, you know, turn left at the light. Well, people were turning left at the light, and they were crossing the Courthouse Square. And then soon as they got right there, well, it said it was ninety-one north, you know, back then, because y'all changed that to ninety-one north straight ahead now. But people were turning right, but then there was nothing. When they got out of the railroad tracks, the sign over there was saying, you know, uh, stay right ninety-one north closed six miles ahead. Well, there's really nothing saying, you know, that they couldn't go that way. And people were just getting going out there and, and, and just getting lost out there, you know. And, um, there, there's nowhere for them to turn around. But what, what happened Monday night was the signs there at Avenue, they, they had been barricaded there, and I don't know who moved them, they got moved. And they was over the hill there. And my thought was, when I got called out there, was people's gonna go top over the hill, or out there where all the seven young ones drowned out, you know, and, and there a few years ago. What reason they're building the road up, you know, because of the ones that got drowned there. When you pop over that hill, they was barricaded down there. And then the road was gone, you know, they pulled all the trees out in there and was burning the trees, you know, in the middle of the road. And, uh, but, uh, then DOT came out Monday night again, and they, they moved the signs back, you know, warned them further back and all. But, uh, I mean, my solution would have been, you know, along with them just closing right there at Mural City, where they couldn't turn right, they'd have to go on toward Damascus, you know. But, and, and then there again, those coming off of twenty-seven up Fourth Street, you know, turning right there, crossing the railroad track, going ninety-one, you know. And they have moved the, moved the signs out a little bit further out in the road there, you know. So, so I think it's since Monday night, it's, it's, it's improved a lot.
You got DOT attention, didn't it?
Well, you still, you still got a lot of, lot of trucks, uh, and we, we discussed that several times. As far as the law, you know, when, when you, you can say no trucks or, 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 but you know, you got to actually give them before you can make cases. You got to give them, the sign has got to be up and worn, I think thirty days in advance or something like that, before you can actually go to, to, to write tickets, you know. Once you change any, any speed reduction sign or anything, you got to give them, uh, they got to be so many, it's got to be posted so many days notice and all before you can do anything. I've talked to the state patrol several times and motor carrier compliance, and they, I said, you know, y'all can write them overweight tickets out on, on Bellevue Road and Cooktown Road and all. But, uh, you know, that money goes to the state on overweight, I think. I think over length and all, some of the county, you know, gets some fine money out of it. But, uh, so, but I, I think the last couple of days, you know, it's, it's improved somewhat, you know, so.
Yeah, I remember yesterday morning, I called Andy. He had a grandson running out waiting on Andy. And Andy put those barricades across Avenue Road up on the pay park, you know, and the dirt park, which he left room enough for people to go around on the dirt park. I got out there, somebody done moved the sign to go over the edge of the ditch. So I got back there, I waited on Andy, I put them back up, you know. And then pulled over right in front of Floyd's old juke joint, sitting there, and people coming up there, turning around, stopping there. What do you know, and I said, the same to do, I said, go right back up there to the square. Turn right on forty-five north, go down to hit two hundred and take you back into New York. Oh, some of them, boy, they got pretty ugly.
Well, and the DOT put that on the sign down there was to turn around and go back six miles. I mean, they put that on the, the, the sign down there, you know, Monday night, I think, you know. I mean, uh, it, it, it's, I hadn't, hadn't heard the complaints used in today that I, we'd had up until Monday, you know. So I think, and I think they were getting it warned on the, uh, on the GPS system and all, you know, that they knew, knew which way to go, so, uh. But of course, I know, you know, they still, I mean, we were discussing over just before I walked over here, you know, they've been out there today, and they said, well, they still have some trucks going down Bellevue. A lot of them using Babcock Road now, they going Babcock going over and going up that way. And, uh, uh, heading two fifty-three and go up that way. So I mean, but they gotta go some way, and, and it's, it's, uh, it's, uh, the, uh, well, it's like with, and, and some, some of the local, local people said, you know, it's got trucks and all, well, you can't, you can't, even though it says no trucks, you, if this, they doing local deliveries, or they're based in that area, you can't stop them from using that road. I mean, it's just like going through, I said, if I through Atlanta, you know, they said no trucks unless, you know, they got it supposed to take two eighty-five, but unless, unless they, uh, they making deliveries or their, their home bases within that area, you can't stop them, you can't legally. I don't want to get into writing a bunch of tickets on folks, you know, that, that, and it's gonna be thrown out in court and everything else, and get us back in more lawsuits and all, you know. I mean, if we do anything legally, it's gonna be legal, you know.
Yeah, one of these people pulled up from Florida yesterday morning. Told me, he said, I'm just supposed to go run in the client and do that way. I said, no, sir, I said, I said, just don't. I said, the sign's up for a reason. I said, just need to turn around, go back up, go across railroad track, going up to the square, turn right, you know. Repeated myself two or three times to him, and he's sitting there, and he looked at me. I said, sir, I said, I wouldn't advise you to go down that road, I said, do, I said, you may get fined.
Well, you know, uh, if they went over that hill, of course, they corrected that problem, it was corrected. But I mean, I was actually afraid somebody was gonna pop over that hill right there at Floyd's place Monday night. They had, the, the sign was there, but they bumped over that hill, went through, there was barricades. It was over the hill right there, and they'd wind up in a burn pile down there burning, you know.
Yeah, I, I spoke with, uh, lady DOT catcher, William, Muralstown, you know. I told her what we were concerned about, one of them like Nikki concerned about over there on Cooktown Road, putting out on, Kimball Road there. I said, ma'am, I said, it comes off a hill right onto that intersection. And I said, what's gonna happen, somebody's not paying attention. You got a semi, I said, get across the road there, stuck in the ditch, whatever. I says, somebody gonna get messed up. You know, and I told her the second thing was that, uh, the destruction that it was doing to our roads, you know. I said, y'all have just destroyed Cooktown. That's such a cook down, when Andy and them put out all the coal plants they had out there Monday, you know, and they just destroyed it. Like Gerald Green did call me back and tell me that he had spoken with them up there, and they said that they were gonna be willing to pay for the damages to the roads. You know, but they had said in the meeting before that they wouldn't be paying it, because there wouldn't be no damage to the road, because they weren't gonna use county roads. But, uh, you know. But I, I told her, I said, ma'am, I said, I'm sorry, I said, third thing, I said, is, um, we got sheriff deputies out there. I said, we got road department personnel out there doing this. And I said, uh, we do not have the manpower. I said, y'all have laid this thing in our block. Well, you take that sign and burn railroad track. If you don't get it just right, it's just a black sign. You know, it ain't got the information they really need on it. It just be black for a few seconds, somebody paying attention, and they just come right on in. Then you got the next one down there, you know, but it ain't very clear, you know.
Well, like I said, and we were looking at it Monday night, you know, uh, at Notchway Church. But that was, I mean, if you were coming south, if you, if you come on down there then, you know, well, yeah, you was wrong, you know. But these people, these people go went to the beach, you know, Saturday and Sunday before it's closed, they come hauling down through here a hundred miles, how they always do. Of course, you know, we've always, for years, we wrote many, many speeding tickets on people going to the beach. Oh, they don't care there, if they're gonna run a hundred miles an hour going to the beach. All they see is the white sands and waves they're going, they don't care.
They're scared of the whole wave.
But then when they, when they came back Saturday and Sunday, when they were coming back, like I said, even, if I hadn't known, I'd been confused the way, way it was, because you come in, the sign there at Burger King, you know, said, stay right ninety-one north closed, you know, turn left at the light, and people would do that. I mean, I would get in their thought, they would turn left at the light, you know. Go across the Courthouse Square, but then they turned right back right on ninety-one north. And then they was going out that way, and they was getting up there then to the railroad track, with that sign sitting over there on the side, you know, said, stay right back. Well, everybody was assuming that, uh, well, six miles ahead, the road's closed. They, they'd be a detour around, but they weren't, you know. They were getting up there and bottlenecking, you know, there. I mean, one time, I think we had forty-one tractor trailers. Somebody opened the gate up at Notchway Church on last Friday. Somebody moved the barricades out of the way. First, it, it was a trooper calling it in, so he, he said, it was a Calhoun County deputy. I don't know what Calhoun County did, but he said, but a Calhoun County deputy was up there and moved the sign out of the way. We wound up with forty-one tractor trailers in the cold zone up there, and then they got out, couldn't go in them, and they was all trying to turn around. So we had three deputies went up there. We were supposed to been in school, we, we was having this active shooter school Friday. But they went up there, and they moved some signs around, you know, to try to get those trucks out, out of the closed area. And then, uh, then I did have, and I don't remember his name, but I had, did have a gap in DOT call, said, your deputies moved signs. I said, yes, we did, we moved them to get those forty-one. We put them back when they got through, but we had to get those trucks. They was in the, they was between Notchway Church and the closed area. You know, they come in there and they had nowhere for them to go. And, um, so, so, I mean, but, but this, like I said, the last two days, I really hadn't had much complaints about it. So I think it's improving, maybe, you know, people are getting aware and everything, so. I don't know what the solution is, you know, but, uh.
So are they gonna close it at Mural City?
Well, I think the DOT can't close it at Mural City. Uh, that would have been my suggestion. I said, I just had it closed right there, and then everybody would have had to have stayed on forty-five north up there, you know. But I think, and I'm not clear with all the DOT regulation, no, but I think they got to warn them so many hundreds of feet back, you know, that it has to be warned, that, you know, it is closed, and I don't know how they're gonna do that. That's on the DOT that day.
Yeah, I had suggested that, nothing else. Set up a barricade down there before you get to railroad track, you know, when you come on.
Well, you, you would need, you would need one down there, because those coming off of twenty-seven or those going all the way down. You know, years ago, that was gonna be the truck route. They was gonna, you were gonna come on through the red light, go on down, you know, and turn left down there, and, and go by Hope's Garage, and go by the patrol station, you know, you, that was gonna be the truck route. And so a lot of trucks still go that way, but then they get there to, to Main Street ninety-one, they turn right and go. And the sign there at the time was, was not clear, it just said, road closed six miles ahead, you know. Well, everybody said, well, okay, that's a warning sign, you know, six miles ahead, road's closed, and that was.
Well, they're expecting a detour, right, yeah.
So, so I, I couldn't, I couldn't. And that's what I told them, I said, I can't get out here and write folks traffic citations when it's not clear, you know, which way it's supposed to go. And if I had been coming through here not knowing, I'd have probably went the same way they did. But I, I think it's better, I, I think it makes me feel better.
Yeah, I say yesterday morning, it, it was real slow to start off with, and I said, maybe something just happened, you know.
It'll pick back up tomorrow afternoon. Friday, you have southbound traffic, you know. I mean, all the years with state patrol, Fridays, Saturday mornings, I went out and hit ninety-one, and I had written many, many tickets between the Baker County line and the Seminole County line, you know, because everybody, Friday afternoon, Saturday morning, they go inside. Now, way they close, rental places now usually close about, uh, uh, eleven, ten or eleven o'clock in Florida, so you can figure about two hours later, after they close, there's gonna be a solid line of traffic. Saturdays and Sundays coming back, some of them, you know, close out on Saturday, some on Sunday. So you got, you, and like we was talking about, you know, they, they probably more traffic on ninety-one right now than they are on twenty-seven.
Probably ten times the rate we're at, probably.
This time of year especially, you know. Well, so twenty-seven people are beginning to realize that twenty-seven is actually a good road, and we, there are more and more people coming through here every day from out of state that's using. Twenty-seven is, it's really increased, you know. I mean, it's getting busier, people getting off I seventy-five. You know, they using US nineteen and US twenty-seven, you know, more than, than ever north-south. And, and there's a lot of traffic comes through, but this time of year, ninety-one is a busy road.
Yeah, if you can't get them to full lane it for, all better down to the Florida line than it was.
Yeah, that'd be nice, but.
It needs it, man, because I was out there, turned a turn, when it took a trailer down, I told you, my dad fought dead, you know. Man, I, it is impossible to get out there, almost impossible to just go down there, turn back over there with Red Road, with that deck on that trailer, you know, I said, and I said, and waited for hours, you know, and then people just. Well, I said, no, you know, it, I just would not have believed how much traffic was on that road. But, and Andy told me, he asked me, do you need to come, he been out in the sun, heat all day. I said, well, no, just go into the house and cool off and rest. So Andy worked his butt off out there too, this weekend out there with that ninety-one miss. And, uh, he told me that these schools had called, wanting to know about every road being closed. I said, Andy, I said, just tell them that when it come time for the run, we'll make, you know, we do what we got to do, you know, get the buses where they can. And I said, maybe by then, we'll have the public train that they know to stay off the road over there.
Well, I, I was at the school today with Gina all day. They were doing the inspection of schools and just, I mean, I know I might have had a turn talking here, but, uh, but the transportation director, director and, and the superintendent, they said, said, oh, y'all gonna have the roads open by August second, school starts. And I said, well, I'm gonna recommend to the county road department that they grade all the roads and have all the dirt roads open prior to August second. And I, I think it'd be, you know, it, they've been wet, you know, and, and I know there's a lot they can't do when it wet and all, and tractor trailers going down the roads. They were, they would get stuck on dirt roads and everything else, we've had there, a lot of dirt roads. They were taking dirt roads and it was wet, they would get. But, but, uh, and schools real concerned about them, you know, being, I said, my recommendation being that all the signs would be moved, and they would be graded and all, you know, good before school starts.
Yeah, Andy and them, they, they trying to get everybody ready, because he got all three road leaders running, you know, trying to get these roads ready for school to start. And they examine just a minute of these roads, and they can train all the stuff, you know, they, they're strong out. But another thing Andy asked, uh, I wish Miss Christine was here, because it's her district. Cooktown Road. Andy wants, uh, well, Offler wants to know their fish. They should probably wind up both to, hopefully, tomorrow or the next, you know, efforts to pull out, build another next road. But I'm not sure if it's Draper Jones, or they going on to Cooktown, you know, to start widening. And Andy there said, Offler needs to know that we want to run one mile to start at Phillipsburg Road, you know, widening the road, they're laying it down. Do we want to run one mile both sides, or you want to run one, uh, two miles just down one side of it? You know, with the widening. He said, they need an answer, you know, to where they'll know what to do. So we can either run one side for two miles, or do both sides, or widen it, you know, for one mile.
What are your situations in that?
I'd run both sides.
Right, run both sides, all right. So just go ahead and do one mile both sides.
Okay.
And I'll pass that on to them when I get out there.
If that's what y'all want to do.
That's the kind of thing.
Yeah, I would. Well, I guess we got our discussion on that done. All right, we got an executive session. Is there any reason to go into executive session over this?
Well, you have to, when you talk to personnel and salaries, you have to go into executive session.
Okay. Need a motion, go into executive session.
I made a motion.
Got a second thing. All right, we are going into executive session.
Mm-hmm.
...
We are back in regular session, uh, there were no decisions made regarding personnel so I guess we need a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion.
We have a second? We are adjourned.